Call it meeting the Tuesday, August 1st, 2017, Brooklyn City Council Meeting to Order. Invocation, we have Andrew Connolly's going to give our invocation tonight.
Father, thank you for this beautiful day. Thank you for this beautiful country and beautiful city that we live in. As we sit today, God, we ask you for your wisdom. And we know you're the source of all knowledge, the source of all wisdom. And so, as we talk today, as we discuss, God, would you be in our midst? And would you lead us and guide us? In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Andrew. Roll call, please.
Here.
Here.
Lester.
Here.
He's here.
He's here, okay. Udi.
Here.
Okay, Udi.
Here.
Thurman.
Here.
Okay, we have the Pledge of Allegiance, and we'll stand and join the Councilmen, Parks, and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Salute, pledge.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item five is Consent Agenda. We've had two items requested to be removed from Consent Agenda, item A and item D. So I entertain a motion.
Make a motion to remove items A and D?
We'll start with Consent Agenda and minus I and D.
Aye.
So we'll revise the motion to approve the Consent Agenda, minus I, A, and D.
I second her motion to...
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Wimpy, here, yes, sorry. Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
I make a motion to table items A and D until the next meeting.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion. Roll call, please.
Wimpy? Yes. Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Item 7A, Public Hearings Appeals, Presentations, Recognitions, and Awards. Consideration, Discussion, and Possible Approval of and Authorization to Execute a Proclamation Declaring the City of Broken Arrow as a Purple Heart City as of August 1, 2017, in recognition of the service and sacrifice of the men and women of Broken Arrow who have served our country. Ms. Burge.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight before you is a resolution asking for your consideration of recognition, and we have some folks we'd like to come forward to make that presentation to the mayor and City Council.
So we want to do the resolution, the proclamation first, and then the plaque?
Um, we can, yes, sir, we can do that way.
So we'll go ahead and get a motion to approve the proclamation, or a motion for the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion. Roll call, please.
Wimpy? Yes. Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
I'll read the proclamation really briefly, and then we'll go on to item 7B. Whereas citizens of Broken Arrow have great admiration and deep gratitude for the men and women who have selflessly served their country and this community in the Armed Forces. And whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest military decoration in present use and was initially created as a badge of military merit by General George Washington in 1782. And whereas the Purple Heart was the first American service award or decoration made available to the common soldier and is specifically awarded to members of the United States Armed Forces who have been wounded or have made the ultimate sacrifice in combat. And whereas the contributions of the men and women from the City of Broken Arrow who have served in the Armed Forces have been vital in maintaining the freedom and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas the citizens of Broken Arrow appreciate the sacrifices our Purple Heart recipients have made in defense of our freedom and wishes to acknowledge their courage by honoring and supporting them. I therefore, Craig Thurman, Mayor of Broken Arrow, do proclaim the City of Broken Arrow as a Purple Heart City. That's the proclamation. And then we'll go on to item 7B, which is Acceptance and Recognition of Plaque Presented by Patriot Members of the Ernest Childers Chapter 589 of the Military Order of the Purple Heart for Claiming Broken Arrow as a Purple Heart City. Now, Michael.
I'd like to introduce to you Mitchell Reed, who we've been working with, and he has some comments, and he'd like to present the plaque to the City Council this evening.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. I am the commander of Purple Heart, have been for about a year and a half. It's been a tough battle, but I've enjoyed it. It's been a labor of love. This is Mike Sturgill, Department Commander for the State of Oklahoma, who is a member of the chapter that I'm in. And I'm his senior vice on the department level, which is the state level and everything. He just had clavicle surgery and rotator cuff surgery, so I get to handle a lot of things. But I want to thank the City of Broken Arrow for becoming a Purple Heart City, because this means a great deal to wounded combat veterans in the biggest city in Oklahoma that has, at this time, and everything, because I know you're only the third or fourth biggest city, which is great, but that's fine. The placing of handicap parking signs in various locations is deeply appreciated, and that means a lot to wounded veterans, because there's a lot of times disabled veterans aren't allowed a handicap placard. That's all I'd like to say about that. I wish to thank Ms. Deborah Wimpy on the council and Mrs. Gail Kirk for all of her help on the event with the City Manager's Office throughout the City of Broken Arrow. In closing, I would like to present a plaque from Purple Heart, and I would like to read at this point, and then I'll have one other comment. The Military Order of the Purple Heart Special Recognition Award is bestowed with pride to Broken Arrow, Oklahoma, for becoming a Purple Heart City, honoring America's combat wounded veterans and all veterans, presented by the patriot members of Ernest Childers, Chapter 589, Military Order of the Purple Heart. In closing, I wish to thank the City for co-hosting the Purple Heart Ceremony that I would like to invite the general public to and everybody else on August the 8th at 7:00 PM to beautiful Veterans Park, at which there is a statue of Lieutenant Colonel Ernest Childers. And that means a lot for us, our chapter and everything in Broken Arrow. And I would like to invite the public as long as, and as well as all staff and everything else for the City of Broken Arrow. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would you like... I think the General will need a motion to accept this plaque.
I make a motion to accept the plaque.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion, roll call, please.
Wimpy? Yes. Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Okay, item eight, citizens' opportunity to address the council on general topic business related to city business. No one has signed up, so we'll move to item 9A. Consideration, Discussion, and Possible Approval of Resolution Number 1039, a resolution expressing objection to illegal gaming on the Muskogee Creek Nation allotment owned by Steve Brunner and located between the Creek Turnpike and Tucson Street. Beth Ann?
Yes, sir. Two meetings ago, the council discussed the possibility of passing a resolution objecting to illegal gaming on the Brunner tract. You may recall that, you know, over the last few council meetings, we've had this on for discussion. Since the most recent council meeting, staff had an opportunity to meet with representatives from the Muskogee Creek Nation, and as a result of that, we were able to formulate this resolution. Some of the highlights that are contained within the resolution, initially, it expresses the council's objection to illegal gaming on this particular tract that's owned by Steve Brunner. It's actually the Muskogee Creek Nation allotment. It also expresses its support for the leadership of the Muskogee Creek Nation and expresses its, your appreciation specifically for taking measures to investigate and address illegal gaming within its jurisdiction. That was something that was discussed at length in the meeting with the Principal Chief, the first, or the Attorney General, the first assistant, and...
Speak Speaker.
Thank you, sorry. This, and the Speaker, the mayor, and the City Manager. They indicated a number of measures that they had implemented to move forward to address it. It, this particular resolution also authorizes Stephen Bug, the City Sovereignty Council at McAfee Taft, to note, send a letter objecting to illegal gaming on this particular allotment, as well as to the Department of the Interior and also the Bureau of Indian Affairs. And the reason that that is so important is because in order for there to be a lease of this particular tract, it's going to have to be approved by the BIA and the Secretary of the Department of the Interior. And so, we don't, we're not aware that that actually has been accomplished. And then the National Indian Gaming Commission, of course, the importance of that particular move is to advise them that we object to illegal gaming on that. It also empowers the City Manager to take any and all action to address illegal gaming and also to look towards the health, safety, and welfare of Broken Arrow residents. And I put all the factual information in the recitals. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So, my first question is, and we've talked about this for years, but in the context of this resolution, we talk about illegal gaming, but would there be any issue if we change that just to make it legal gaming? Because my concern is that the tribe, the Creek Nation, for whatever reason, could decide that they are in favor of this, and whatever we're doing tonight could be it for naught, because we've now put the word illegal gaming on there, and all of a sudden, everything that they do there becomes legal. If it, if it's through the approval of the Creek Nation, National Indian Gaming Commission, all the necessary checks and balances, it becomes legal gaming. And we've made a motion, or a resolution for illegal gaming.
Right, and if I could address that. Clearly, it has been communicated to the City Manager that the Creek Nation is asserting jurisdiction over this particular tract. And it becomes illegal on many levels, you know, based on failure to get approval from the NIGC, failure to, and I was advised recently that the Chiilegi's, that they have not paid their compact dues with the State of Oklahoma. So there are many, many ways which result in this being illegal. The thing is that in terms of legality of resolutions, this is rock solid, because at the present time, any actions would certainly constitute illegal gaming. If they, if the Creek Nation decides to move forward with certain approvals for gaming on that particular tract, that's something that the council would have no authority to regulate or contest, I don't believe. So I also, I felt like it communicated a positive message to the tribe, because they do seem to be taking measures to address it at this juncture. And so if it appears at some time in the future that it is going to move in that direction, you certainly and absolutely could pass a subsequent resolution. But based upon our meeting, and the City Manager and the mayor may disagree with this, but they, the tribal representatives and leadership seem very, very committed to not having gaming at this particular tract.
Well, and I, I think that's, first, I want to thank the fact that the tribe came and met with us. We had Principal Chief Floyd, we had the Speaker of the National Council, the Attorney General, and the first Attorney General came and met with us, and they were very adamant about the fact that they did not want illegal gaming. And that's what they are calling it, that's what they are working against. They, they really do not support, from what they told us, they do not support any kind of illegal gaming. And if they don't sanction the gaming, it's illegal. It's another thing that has to happen, it's got to go through the nation. This is sovereign land for the, for the Creek Nation, so they are completely against it and, and told us that they are willing to take many measures, ones they can't tell us and ones that they could reveal, but they are very adamant about trying to make sure this doesn't happen. And so, I think, and they considered illegal gaming, because there's not any permission from their nation to game there. And so, I really, that's what, that's how they're going against it as far as illegal gaming, and I do think Beth Ann is correct, that we start with illegal gaming and get this shut down. And if, if some legal gaming tried to happen in that area, then we'd have a different resolution.
So, I'm sorry. Have, the Creek Nation then does not, rejects the notion of concurrent jurisdiction with the Chiilegi tribe, which I think has been proven out by the courts as well, but in any event, they reject that and would fight against that assertion of concurrent jurisdiction?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, I certainly appreciate the Creek Nation's involvement and, because I know when it comes down to it, just from a layperson's point of view, you know, they're the ones that's going to make the jurisdiction to make the calls, you know, on that. I was a little bit confused too about the illegal gaming, because, you know, if they could make it legal, I mean, we're still opposed to it, the gaming. So that brings up a question, is there some gaming? Have we been notified of any gaming that's going to take place on there that would be legal gaming?
No, we have not been notified of any gaming, but from what I understand from, from our meeting that we had is that the Creek Nation sees this as illegal gaming, because they have not, they don't have permission.
Okay.
They don't have permission from NIGC, they don't, don't have any permission from the Creek Nations. The Muskogee Creek Nation has not given them permission to game on their sovereign land. So their position is, what they told us, their position is that they are against this, against any illegal activity, even things beyond gaming.
Of course, from, from our perspective, certainly from my perspective, you know, you see the, the gaming taking place all over state, but usually it's outside the city limits of cities. You go to Bartlesville or go to whatever cities, and this is in, in the City of Broken Arrow, and it affects the surrounding property, it affects the Turnpike, so there are several levels of concern that we have. And I really appreciate you guys as working with the Creek Nation, and the Creek Nation's willing to work with this, because it's, it's important to the City of Broken Arrow and the surrounding town.
And we have expressed our opinion that, for the City Council and the city, that we are against any gaming around residential neighborhoods, schools, you know, we don't support that. But I know that the Creek Nation, I feel we're very clear in our meeting, that, that they consider this illegal gaming, and they do not support any gaming or any illegal activity that they have not sanctioned on this site.
And I would assume we still don't have any resolution as far as our personnel, police or fire personnel going on site for...
We actually discussed that.
We did discuss that.
There was, the Assistant Attorney General talked about an agreement that was last few years, it's been a few years, that needs to be updated, and the City Attorney and the Attorney General talked about getting together to make sure that that's consistent with, you know, both entities' guidelines and...
Mutual aid agreement.
But we would not send our, since our inspections department did not inspect the facility, we would fight a fire there, but would not send a firefighter inside the building.
Well, that's, that's correct. I mean, the chief has a responsibility, and we did discuss that a little bit, but obviously if there's some type of incident there, you know, we, we need, we will render whatever aid we need to render.
As long as we have permission to be there.
Sure, that's, that was my point too.
Well, I just want to say is that, you know, from my perspective, to hear, they have given this a lot of thought, and obviously, you know, they ask us not to completely share what enforcement action they would take, should there be actions, but there wasn't one item that we brought up that they hadn't thought through about what type of action we'd take. And as the mayor said, it's not just about the gaming, there's other potential activities associated with the restaurant that could happen that they haven't secured their approvals as well. So they're prepared to act accordingly, should there be something that's not, that's not approved there as well. And then they talked about legislation that the tribe or the council was going to consider regarding construction going forward, because of things they've learned from this process.
Do they have, do they, do they feel they have a mechanism by which to gain entry to that facility to make sure it's been built properly and up to code, at least some level of code?
Yes, and I believe they were, they had something at the National Council this weekend that they were approving for inspections. I don't know if that got approved or not, but they were talking about that. But they, they do have, it is, from what I understand, it's their sovereign lands, they have the right to go on that land at any time, and so, even with enforcement. So they do have those rights, and so, they are going to exercise whatever right they, they told us they were going to exercise whatever right they needed to exercise to make sure that illegal gaming does not happen on that location.
Have any more questions or discussion, and I will, we have several people signed up that want to speak to this item. So first, we have, Zane?
Zane?
Zane Anderson? He's going to give us her name and address, and you all have three minutes.
You bet. Zane Anderson, I live at 11-464 South 140th East Avenue in Broken Arrow, about a mile from the, where the construction has begun. Soon enough, I actually bought two and a half acres across the street and just got the permission from the city to begin my house and shop there. So excited to dream, build my dream home for my four little boys and my wife and I. First of all, thank you. Thank you so much for the time that you've put in to fighting what we don't want in Broken Arrow. Broken Arrow is a very, very unique place to live, a place that my mom and dad both graduated high school from. I'm grateful to be a citizen of Broken Arrow, and we're doing everything that we can to stop things from coming in that we don't want. You all have done an incredible job. I think the growth now in Broken Arrow is greater than it's probably ever been. It's remarkable what you've done with, with downtown and over by the Bass Pro area, it's absolutely incredible. So thank you. What I want to just briefly speak on is what we're prepared to do as a City Council and as citizens, if this does get pushed through somehow, somehow they get it up and running. We need to begin thinking now in a proactive manner of perhaps unorthodox ideas on how to keep them from being successful. This isn't something we want, therefore, we don't want it to thrive. We shouldn't just fold over once they, if they were to get it up and going. Some of those ideas would be that we continue to not give them any support with utilities, that we keep that from, from them to make things slightly more difficult. The other would be, if I'm not mistaken, they have a good amount of land there, but only a portion of it, specifically right where the casino, proposed casino sits now is, is Indian land. And therefore, the other property that they may want to expand onto would be land that you all would have the ability to not give permits for if they wanted to expand. And the last thing, and perhaps the most unorthodox idea, but I think could be rather successful, would be you establish a toll. I imagine that we have a pretty good easement going down Olive. We could, we could put a toll up as you pull into that casino and charge an insane amount of money if you want to go to that casino. You want to pull in? Well, you thought the Creek Turnpike was expensive at 75 cents, now you got to pay 50 bucks. And they're going to take their parking voucher, and the casino's going to have to pay them that 50 bucks to the individual, and at least we'll be getting some money from this whole deal if it was to get pushed through, and hopefully it would run them out. Thank you so much. This is a great place to live. Thank you.
Next, we have Robert Martinak.
Good afternoon. Robert Martinak, 1921 South Palm Avenue, the great City of Broken Arrow. I rise in support of Resolution 1039 as the, one of the co-founders of Broken Arrow Citizens Against Neighborhood Gaming. I much applaud the work of this City Council, the City Manager, I'm certain that they have worked tirelessly on this as well, and the entire staff, for working with the Muskogee Creek Nation. The Indians are our friends here, and they're, appreciate their good work in working with this body. And I'm, I'm really proud of the City of Broken Arrow, because I think that this is a model resolution that cities all across the nation deal with the same issues that, unfortunately, we dealt with a few years back. And I think this is excellent, an excellent resolution and a model for other cities to follow, and I just rise to thank you guys for your effort and proud to be among you. Thank you.
Next, we have Larry Williamson.
Yes, Councilor Larry Williamson, 1217 West Louisville Street. I would like to thank you very much for crafting this resolution and for, I encourage you very much to support it and pass it. Like Councilor Lester, I oppose, would be in opposition to any casino gaming in the City of Broken Arrow. It's just a negative influence on the culture of the communities, the neighborhoods surrounding them, there are schools nearby and so forth. Had a lot of these discussions several years ago. I just heard, I just heard about this yesterday, hadn't had time to drive down to that property. I guess I have a question, but it doesn't make much difference to my argument, but is the property, is the restaurant they're talking about, is it at the new building just south of the Turnpike or the old proposed casino? Okay, it's this thing with the red roof just south of the Turnpike, okay. I assume that it's still on land owned by an individual who's a member of the Chiilegi Tribal Town, is that right?
Creek, Creek. And it's, it's allotted land, it's, it's...
Yeah, originally, it was the ownership claiming to be, they were claiming their right to do gaming as, as a member of the Chiilegi Tribal Town. Is that, that does not apply to this case?
Well, it could apply, as far as, I think that's who's trying to get the permit, but...
Okay, that's why.
It's actually Creek allotted land, it's not Chiilegi land.
Okay, but the owner of this property is not the individual Creek allotted. He cannot be unless he's at least, if he was an allotted at majority age, when the original Creek allotment of that land was given, he'd be over 130, 135 years old.
His family.
Well, then he, then he's owner by conveyance. He's not an allotted. He's probably not a restricted Indian. It's, and I'm going to be out of time here in just a second. My, one of my points was going to be to ask if the city has a public relations or public information director, if they could put together, like, just a factual narrative, the facts surrounding this, and for example, the, the relationship between the Chiilegi Tribal Town, which they are not part of the Creek, the Muskogee Creek Nation, period, because they were one of the three Creek Tribal Towns who took up the BIA's, BIA's offer back in 1939 to opt, if they chose, to become a sovereign, independent Indian tribe, and they did. And they are an independent Indian tribe, but they have no territorial, they have no territorial jurisdiction in Tulsa County, they're down in Hughes, Okfuski, and McIntosh County. And as such, it's illegal in Oklahoma for a tribe to operate gaming outside its territorial jurisdiction. One thing I didn't see in this is the, the state's chief legal officer is the Attorney General, and these Indian tribes only have, they're only enabled to operate casino gaming as a result of some laws in Oklahoma that were changed a few years ago that allowed it. And so, it's Oklahoma law, they would be breaking, and I understand if they haven't broken the law yet, maybe the Attorney General's not interested, but I was wondering if there'd be a time to, you know, bring in an Attorney General. You can certainly ask, you could have our, one of our state senators, I'm not sure if it's in Nathan Dobbs District 33, but could have a state senator ask for a formal opinion from the Attorney General on the issue, and that would, would be legal precedent in court if it goes to court. Thank you very much.
Great comments. Great comments. Let me just share with the council members and the public. Beth Ann Charles, our city attorney, has had multiple conversations with the state attorney general's office about this to make sure they understand our position as well as the facts as we know them. So I've been very, very pleased with how Beth Ann has really stayed on top of this from multiple different facets, whether it's federally, locally, or at the state level. Everyone that is, that we have a relationship is aware of the city's position on this.
Any more discussion?
I'd make a motion to approve Resolution Number 1039 and authorize its execution.
Question second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes, and I do want to thank Beth Ann and Michael and staff, all the work you've done on this along with the Creek Nation and their support. Okay, we'll move on to Item 9B. Consideration discussion, possible approval to grant a waiver of property owned by Ryan Adams and Shane and Brittany Casey located within Steeplechase Farms and amended Glen Eagle subdivision regarding the assessment district for stormwater initiated in 2007. Beth Ann?
Yes, sir. As you know, this was the item was considered the last time. We, the council since this occurred, actually the clerk received a couple of additional requests for consideration. I know that we probably will have one more coming that was not as a result of a request that had been received by city staff. So the waivers are as indicated. And staff, this was as the council directs last time. Of course, you all took the action to grant the waiver, so I'll be happy to answer any questions.
My question, and I know we discussed this, but I think it's important for, before we make the decision. The facts here, are they the same as the prior events? In other words, they were, they contacted the city and were told that they did not owe anything, and there was nothing filed of record, and they subsequently determined that they, so it's the same facts as prior?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We also have, more discussion?
Yes, sir. Mayor, members of council, we had two council members that were here last meeting. So let's step back here to make sure, and then Vice Mayor Udi can jump in, or Councilman Lester, or Councilman Wimpy. Is that, it came to my attention through the attorney, our city attorney's office that there was an assessment that was placed on properties in this development many years ago as a result of the fact that the city went in and paid for some improvements with respect to stormwater. And as you know, anytime you, the city make those improvements, there's an assessment district that's established. And then there are assessments to the property owners based on the total cost, and it's divided up accordingly. Well, it came to my attention that there were a number of individuals that were contesting the assessment because when they closed on the property, they were not the original owners. They were told by the city that there were no, there was no fees or liens due and owing. I took the position, as I have in the past a couple of times in previous positions, is that even though they may not have received notice, that they should pay, they should pay those assessments because they're enjoying the benefit of the improvements that were made. And having to make a decision, I always wanted to err on the fact that there were people that did pay those assessments. Last, last month, excuse me, last council meeting, which was last month, there were three individuals that approached the council because in my letter, I explained to them that the ultimate decision for this is the governing body. And this, this matter started with the city council via the assessments and the ordinance to authorize expenditures. That's where it could finish up. And I was very comfortable with the council taking the action they did. Because even though I believe that they still should pay it, the city erred several years ago when these folks that purchased those properties got a letter from the city saying there was no fee due and owing. So therefore, I'm very comfortable that if in fact an individual, subsequent property owner can demonstrate that they got something from the city, that there was nothing due, that the city should waive this because we did, they relied upon us when they were closing. And therefore, the, either the seller should have conveyed it and did not, but for whatever reason, we've put a process in place to make sure this doesn't happen again. But should, should the eight or 10 people that come forward to you, and they can prove it, then I would ask the council to waive their request.
So you did improve the system to where it won't happen in the future?
Absolutely.
And I know the story, if everyone remembers, these were all, both these subdivisions were built in Wagner County. They were not built to our flood standards, and then we had actually what was equal to a 600-year storm. Houses got flooded, and so the city used their labor force and the citizens paid for materials only. And the city, since it was annexed, and the city went ahead and improved the stormwater system. So that's kind of how we got to this place. We do have, Ryan Adams has signed up to speak. Ryan, if you'd like to come up and speak, give us your name and address.
Ryan Adams, 1985 East 39th Street South, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'd like to thank you guys for letting me speak. The only thing I'd really like to add to this is I feel like it was unfair to go into closing on my property and receive that, receive the assessment from the closing, the title company stating that I had no liens on my property. I do believe that it was the responsibility of the prior homeowner to handle this lien. And I do believe if the city of Broken Arrow would have issued liens in a timely manner, that it could have been handled and you guys could have received your guys' money. So I believe that, that this assessment should be waived. Being that I purchased a house in 2014, it's my understanding that the work was done prior to 2010. It would have given you guys quite a lot of time to issue liens on the, on the previous homeowner. That's all I have to say. Thank you, guys.
Okay, so. Well, I think we have to remain consistent in what we've done unless I just think we can't do it for, as long as the facts are the same. That's my biggest concern. If they are, then I.
The city, at closing, said that there was not any liens. It puts them in a position. The homeowner believed there wasn't any lien at that time, and so that's something that we said we rectified.
Yes, sir.
That it won't happen again, but I entertain a motion for council's pleasures.
I'd make a motion to issue waivers for the, for Ryan Adams and Shane and Brittany Casey under the circumstances as presented here tonight.
Second.
Question second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Okay, Item 9C, consideration discussion, possible approval of and authorization to execute an amended engagement letter with Arledge and Associates. Tom Cook.
Mayor, City Council, Tom Cook, Finance Department. At the June 15th city council meeting, the council authorized the execution and approved an engagement letter with Arledge and Associates for the completion of the fiscal year 2017 audit. Subsequently, last council meeting, the council approved and executed, authorized the execution of an engagement with Crawford and Associates to prepare our annual financial statements. So staff went back to Arledge and Associates because there was a portion of what they had done that Crawford would, is now going to be doing, and asked them to consider if there would be a scope change and a change in pricing. They have come back to us and agreed that there was a change in scope and have presented a new engagement letter that is a $15,000 decrease in pricing. And so I'd ask that the council approve the execution.
We're ice fruit doing things that cost less. I'd make a motion to approve an authorized execution of the amendment engagement letter with Arledge and Associates, PC, to conduct the fiscal year 2017 audit. Before you have a chance to say anything else.
Use that money for the assessment.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Okay, Item 9D, we've been asked by AT&amp;T to table this to the next meeting. So I'd entertain a motion to table.
Some move? Second.
Question second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Item 9E, consideration discussion, possible approval of Resolution Number 1019, a resolution of the city of Broken Arrow declaring approximately 1.864 acres of city-owned property located at 305 North Main surplus and authorizing transfer to Broken Arrow Economic Development Authority. Beth Ann?
Yes, sir. I'm not going to go into a great deal of detail on this because Mr. Stevens is going to discuss it in the resolution approving the economic development agreement. But, but just basically, as you know, the city acquired the property on February 12, 2016 for the sum of $600,000 plus attorney's fees and related costs. The property was acquired with the idea that we would either utilize the property for city purposes or it would be utilized for comprehensive economic development activity. What this particular resolution does is it declares the property surplus. It declares the goal of furthering economic development and done for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Broken Arrow. And it authorizes execution of a general warranty deed and transfer to the Broken Arrow Economic Development Authority, which of course is a public trust that you all also serve as trustees on. So I would respectfully request that you approve Resolution 1019 and authorize this execution. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I'd just make a comment that when we originally purchased this, certainly we wanted to make the property, kind of level the property, kind of make it look nice on Main Street. But there was an option that we could have, the city could have used it for themselves, our economic development. Either way, we thought it was going to be beneficial to the city of Broken Arrow. I'm really excited about this, the economic development part of it and the monies that we spent. Eventually, we'll get those monies back, and those monies will be transferred back, as the staff has stated, into the fund which it came from and be used properly. So it's kind of a win-win situation, I think. I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 1019 and authorize its execution.
Second.
And a motion second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Item 9F, consideration discussion, possible approval of Resolution Number 1023, corrected. A resolution authorizes the city attorney to enter into a final judgment entry, a final journal entry of judgment without admitting liability in the matter of Rivergate Crossroads versus City of Broken Arrow. Beth Ann?
Yes, sir. There was a problem discovered with the legal description in the prior resolution that was approved by council. So this corrected resolution fixes that and authorizes us to move forward. I'll be happy to answer any questions, but we would request that you approve Resolution Number 1023, corrected and authorized execution.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 1023, corrected and authorized execution.
Second.
Question second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Okay, Item 9G, consideration discussion and possible approval of Resolution Number 1029, a resolution of Broken Arrow City Council accepting, agreeing, and consenting to a First Amendment to the trust indenture of the Broken Arrow Industrial Trust, which provides for clarification of language describing the trust's state. Beth Ann?
Yes, sir. The last two weeks in the legal department, we pretty much did nothing but write resolutions. So this is certainly no exception to that. The Broken Arrow Industrial Trust actually met on July the 25th. It presently is comprised of the city manager and Mr. Smithwick and Mr. Kandiff. What this particular resolution does is it authorizes the First Amendment to the trust indenture, which would enable you all by virtue of your position to serve as trustees. We also modernized the language. I pilfered some language from some others to give the trust, the trustees broad discretion to do a variety of functions, which I think is always important. So I'll be happy to answer any questions, but I would request that you approve Resolution 1029 and authorize its execution.
I think I'll spend the rest of the night signing resolutions.
Make a motion to approve Resolution, so we can hurry up and sign them. Approve Resolution 1029 and authorize its execution.
I'll second that, although I would point out it's just adding more work for, you know, another meeting for us to go to.
I will say the original guys on this commission, I was reading through it in 1962, were certainly good leaders in the city of Broken Arrow. And tremendous, this was a tremendous effort to add on, make larger Brayden Wench at that time. And they did, stepped out and did a really great job, so. And this trust might be a trust that we might want to use in the future, I would think, as I read through it, industrial trust.
Something we will reuse. We had a motion. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Okay, motion second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Item 9H, consideration discussion, possible approval of Resolution Number 1038, a resolution of Broken Arrow City Council approving and authorizing execution of a certain economic development agreement by and among City of Broken Arrow and Alpha Laval Eek. Norm?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Norm Stevens, economic development coordinator for the city. We've, next two items that were coming to you with, we're pretty excited in the city manager's office and at the Chamber of Commerce. We've worked on these items, and in particular this item, for well over a year and had countless, countless meetings with the individuals at Alpha Laval. More emails than I care to speak of in exchange and then working with them to finalize the agreement. As you all know, Alpha Laval is a plant that's located at 1201 South 9th Street. It was formerly ACE, which was Air Cool Exchange. And they are a corporate organization under the laws of the state of New Jersey, and they're headquartered in the United States. Their part of the headquarters is in Richmond, Virginia. They currently employ 114 individuals, and they're wanting to expand their industrial manufacturing operation, which is located at 1201 South 9th. It's currently 17.5 acres. They will have purchased or have purchased approximately 21 additional acres of land, which is attached to the Alpha Laval site, to the east of it. And they are planning to create and are creating a United States of America Competence Center in the city of Broken Arrow with a greater critical mass of welded heat exchangers expertise. They are consolidating several different locations throughout the United States into their operation in Broken Arrow. The project will take two phases as they work their way through. And the first phase is they will add 68,500 additional square feet of space for manufacturing, warehouse, office, and other related uses. Upon completion of that phase, they will hire 120 new full-time employees, and that will bring them up to 234 employees. The Phase 1 construction start date is January 1st, 2018, and the Phase 1 completion date is June 30th, 2019. When they get through that phase, they will start on about May 30th of 2023 with Phase 2, which will be the construction of 220,000 square feet of additional space for manufacturing, warehouse, office, and other related uses. Upon completion of that, they will hire 147 additional new full-time employees, which will bring their working employee staff up to 381 employees. They came to the city and they requested that the city assist them with an industrial access road to be built on the south side of their property that will run from Lynn Lane to the east. And that particular extension road will help also to ultimately open up land in the very far back that is not owned by Alpha Laval, but that has access to a railroad. So there could be a railroad spur there in the future if the person who owns it so desires. Through the negotiations and under the approval of Mr. Spurgeon, the city came to bring an offer before you that the city will spend no more than $500,000 for the engineering and construction of that industrial access road. Along with the partnership with the state of Oklahoma, this governor and the Department of Commerce has given the guarantee that they will provide sufficient funds to complete that road, which will be probably closer to $800,000 to a million dollars above that. So it is a partnership between the two. Kenny Tully with the Broken Arrow Economic Development Corporation has worked on some quality job aspects with this. The city of Broken Arrow will not, and they are very clear with this, the city of Broken Arrow. Arrow will not spend any more than $500,000 or up to $500,000. The industrial access road will become a city street and it will be Nashville Street on the south side. If the mayor would allow, I'd like to ask Wes Smithwick to step up here, who has spent a considerable amount of time with his staff and the leadership of Alpha Laval.
Good evening. I will promise this will not be as long as the last time I was before this distinguished body. Counsel Wimpy, I think I filibustered for about 45 minutes. So, yeah, this is a long time coming tonight, but I have to tell a story. So a few weeks ago, some of you may have seen, I wrote an article in a chamber newsletter entitled "Why Jobs Matter." In that article, I commented that few citizens get excited about jobs, and that jobs should be our number one concern. Quality job growth is the future of Broken Arrow. This Alpha Laval project is very good for Broken Arrow. It brings new jobs, new capital investment, and growth to our local economy. This project has the potential to bring upwards of $20 million of new annual income, as in payroll, to our community. That's new money for people to spend on goods and services in our community. On top of that is the one-time construction-related dollars. Alpha Laval, here, we don't know much about. We know ACE, air-cooled exchangers, been here many, many years. But some years back, it was purchased by a company called Alpha Laval out of Sweden. They're not a little company. They have 12,000 employees around the world, from China to Europe to Africa and the United States, and they grow by acquisition. They purchased ACE here several years ago, and they've purchased other heat exchanger and other related businesses around the United States. So they're no small, unknown company. This project began nearly 18 months ago, on a day Kenny Tilly walked into my office with information about a project, and we pulled up Google Maps, because that day, we knew we needed a road. Google said there was a road called East Nashville Street. I called Norm Stevens, because I said, I know there's no road there. Norm, I need you to find out if that's still a city street, or is we've given that up? And we learned that day, there was no such road, right, Norm? We knew 18 months ago, we needed to have a street there to make this project work. Over the next 18 months, countless hours of negotiation and conversation has happened. We engaged the Oklahoma Department of Commerce and the governor's office. Our state partners have provided critical resources to make this a reality. Last October, Secretary Snodgrass and her team visited Alpha Laval in Sweden to push Oklahoma as the location for their new facility. A few weeks later, I visited their location and visited with their leadership there and pushed Broken Arrow to be the location, explained why it was important. And as recently as June, Governor Fallon and I and Kenny Tilly visited their headquarters again and met with their CEO and chairman of the board, again, talking about why Oklahoma was important for them, this to be here. So this has been a long 18 months. Everyone involved has been professional. They have worked to help make this a reality. Governor Fallon and Secretary Snodgrass have just been tremendous. Last November, we had one final opportunity to convince Alpha Laval that Broken Arrow was the place that this facility should be. Norm was there, a number of city people were there, I don't really remember who all. It was a lot. We had the Secretary of Commerce there. We had, at the time, Secretary Ridley of the Oklahoma Department of Transportation was there in person. We had Governor Fallon on the phone, tried to do video conference, but it wouldn't work. But everyone present there worked collectively to make this project happen. And that's the day where we put the place, all of the requirements from an infrastructure and road perspective to make this happen. I share this timeline because the work on projects such as this is not quick, and it is not simple. You can tell from all those involved, it requires a lot of teamwork, a lot of networking, a lot of relationships, and a lot of politics to make it all work. We all had to row the boat in the same direction, and without the tremendous effort of all involved, this project would not have landed in Broken Arrow and perhaps would have landed in a different state, and we would be losing jobs instead of gaining jobs. I am very appreciative to the work of the Oklahoma Department of Commerce and the governor's office that they did to help us win this project. At the end of the day, our investment of $500,000 gets a new city street that also happens to provide access to another piece of currently land-locked property with railroad access that Norman suggested. I'd like to recognize the hard work of Kenny Tilly on my team and of Norm Stevens here at the city. Numerous others at the city were also engaged, and I want to thank them as well, and I encourage you to support this project. I'll be happy to take any questions if you have them.
Questions, Wes? Thank you, Wes. It is very important when we get a European company to invest in Broken Arrow, and we're talking about 267 new jobs that don't exist today, that, and so, and the EDC constantly is working on other projects to bring more jobs, and that's really how we've grown our city, is all the jobs that we've generated over the past five to 10 years have really made a difference. Norm?
I just ask you to support this project. I think it's good for the city. I think it's going to help us tremendously. Anytime that we do economic development, the first thing that we look at is jobs. Retail follows jobs. We get the good jobs here, then we work on the other items.
I know that the mayor and Councilman Lester and I have each, at different times, had the privilege of serving on the EDC board, and I know everyone sitting up here wants to see Broken Arrow be success, and wants to see us grow and thrive and get the good kind of jobs, the jobs that bring in the money that allows us to keep doing what we do. And if the price to be paid for that is a, is a infrastructure project that the city would, that's what cities do, is infrastructure and public safety. And I think that that's a small price to pay to be able to celebrate and see our city gain some really great jobs. And I'm just glad the people over across the seas understand how truly special Broken Arrow is, because we've known it for a long time.
And Counsel Manuti, to speak to that, and Mr. Spurgeon may also speak to it, he and I went and toured their facility a week or two ago. They could not have been more grateful to the city of Broken Arrow and the Economic Development Corporation, Wes' staff, on the reception they got from Broken Arrow, and they were sold in our city.
Yes, they're, they're a $35 billion company. And for them to make the investment in our city, to me, is absolutely, and expand it is absolutely amazing. And, you know, the money, just to make sure everybody understands, the funds for the roads is coming out of our capital improvement sales tax fund, because the council designated a couple of years ago, set aside funds to be able to provide economic development opportunities. And so this is something we budgeted for, based on an understanding that we would hopefully have the opportunity to bring them here. I too want to take this opportunity to, Kenny Tilly is amazing. I mean, basically, to land a company that, where you can get three or 400 jobs is almost unheard of in today's, in today's world, and to be able to entice them to come to Oklahoma, and more specific, Broken Arrow, is not something that happens every single day. And it does take those relationships that we have at the level, and Wes is correct, I want to thank him, and I want to thank Norm, because it takes somebody with his tenacity that works through all the details. So there were a lot of people that touched this, as Wes said. I mean, the, the engineering department, Kenny Swab, who has a lot of experience from the private sector, knew that it was best for us to take the lead on this project in terms of getting the plans and specifications done. So there's a lot of things that we did innovative-wise to move this project forward to meet their timelines. So I too actually would ask the council to support this agreement, so we can go ahead and move forward.
Any more discussion?
I'm making a motion to approve Resolution Number 1038 and authorize its execution.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Item 9I, consideration discussion of possible approval of Resolution Number 1042, a resolution of Broken Arrow City Council, approving and authorizing execution of a certain economic agreement among Broken Arrow Economic Development Authorities, City of Broken Arrow, and Milestone Capital. Norm?
Yes, sir. Now, something that's a little more fun than clomping around a manufacturing site and, with a hard hat and those clumpy shoes. The, the council had the foresight back in 2016 to realize that the church property that was located at 305 North Main was dilapidated. It was an eyesore, and it was becoming dangerous. Sooner or later, I truly believe somebody would have set it on fire, and then we'd have had our fire department putting their lives at risk trying to put that fire out. We went ahead and purchased that, and we tore down the building, and we moved forward to market it. The first time that we went forward to market to get an organization in, they came in, they provided us information, they said that they could do this particular project. They left out, and as they were doing their due diligence, they came back and they said we would have to add $3 million additional dollars to get this project to where it is. They said, we just can't make it at the scope that we wanted to do, we need to significantly scale it down. At that time, we decided as a staff, in cooperation with Wes' staff, that we were going to go back out and try to find another partner to go in with this. Early in January of 2017, I began negotiations with Mr. Cowan, John Cowan of Cowan Construction, and Steve Esley, the Director of Development for Cowan Construction on a project. And over the course of so many months, we continued the negotiation, and we have come to an agreement to bring before the council. The agreement is for them to locate a project on that space that I think will truly transition the north side of Broken Arrow. The economic development agreement that we're putting together, or that we've put together, is written to ensure a good quality product. We have a good quality construction crew, and I think that at the end of the day, we're all going to be very pleased with it. In the economic development agreement, the developer agrees to develop a four-story building consisting of residential, retail, and restaurant, and office space with a gross building floor area of 121,080 square feet. The developer also agrees to begin, the commencement date to begin, when the developer enters into a final agreement with an architect to complete design documents for the project, but it can't be later than two months following the effective date of the agreement. If council approves it, and the authority approves it, it will be August 11 of 2017. The construction commencement date will not be later than six months after that. We don't want to make a deal and enter into this and then see that piece of property remain not being built on. And the developer has assured us that that would not be the case. The substantial completion date for this project will not be any later than 24 months after the construction commencement date. The project restriction in recruitment is the developer will actively recruit upper-scale restaurants, neighborhood-style projects, or a neighborhood-style market, unique lunch and dinner designation boutiques, and even possibly a tailor shop for the establishment. The minimum investment that Milestone, who is the name of the company, Milestone LLC, will invest in this property is in excess of $17 million. And I don't want it to be lost, the size, when you get to talking of a project in that scope, $17 million is a substantial amount of money to put into a project like this. The city also has things that we need to agree to do, and that is that we will enter into a long-term lease, and that's a 99-year lease with Milestone. And this lease, if approved by the authority, will, and the council will go into effect on August 11, 2017. Milestone will, or the city will also, forgive me, will extend a 12-inch water line to the development by the end of March 2018. That water line will be done through CDBG funds, and the CDB funds are to supply water to the neighborhood around that project. But fortunately, we're going to be able to also use that water line to tap in to help provide fire suppression for that, that development. The city will also design and construct, and this is a very, very exciting portion of this, and we will design and construct one more block of streetscape in front of that project to match up with what we just completed in front of the Chamber of Commerce. That will be done by the time that their construction, their construction is finished on their project. We will also have to reroute some aerial power lines, get them moved out of the alley, because the scope of the project will extend across the alley that is currently there. There's also a sanitary sewer that we discovered that's in the alley, and we will have to move that slightly to the east. And the city does have fiber in that alley, and that will have to be moved either to the east or the west, whichever is going to be the easiest for them to do. Cowan Construction is entering into a 99-year lease with, on the property, because the city owns the property, and we will continue to own the property. If, through the economic development agreement, that Cowan decides in the first five years at the completion of the project, but if they decide in the first five years that they have a buyer who comes in and wants to buy this project, they must sell it for no less than $701,151.40, which will make the city whole in our investment into that project. If it's after the five-year, at year six, if they sell the property, they'll pay fair market value, based on the Tulsa County Assessor-stated fair market value. It will be adjusted for inflation annually at the stated inflation rate by the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, plus an additional 10%. We feel like this agreement, and I was asked one time, do you feel like this is a great agreement? And I said, no, I feel like it's a very, very good agreement. I said, I've never negotiated an agreement where there was either personal or professional that I thought was the perfect agreement. But this was an area of negotiations that we came to that we wanted to bring before the council. I've asked that Mr. Cowan and Steve Esley come up and share with you a little information about the project, but before they do, I want to add one last thing. The financial return to the city is also pretty substantial. We believe through the contract where they will actively have the use tax brought in at the point of delivery for the projects, that that should get somewhere around $260,500 in use tax. The property tax, because this is in the TIF district, the property tax will come back to the city, as, as all the new buildings in the TIF district do, and that should be around $250,000. Working with Development Services, we estimate that the development fees for the project will be somewhere between $40,000 and $50,000. I'm going to ask John Cowan and Steve Esley with Milestone LLC to come up and provide some information on the actual project.
I'm John Cowan, representing Milestone Capital. Steve Esley is assisting here with Cowan Construction. I think Steve is going to put up some renderings of the project that Norm just explained to you. A little bit more back, more background to how we, to how we got here, that as Norm was explaining it. When, when you all, I think, rejected the, the agreement you were working on previously to have this project developed, we, we did discuss the project and expressed our interest in the project with you all, but ultimately, what, what the city did is issue another request for proposals to the public, to developers. We submitted a specific response to that request for proposals, which I believe you all have reviewed some months ago, when, when you did accept our firm and agree to enter into negotiations. So we have been very actively engaged with, with many of the staff I see in the room today since about, I think about the middle of March, getting to where we are today. And in fact, over the last several, several days, we've been talking late into the evening, and our legal, our legal staff has been working with your legal staff, and we do now have, have all the agreements in place, and we're ready to move forward with the project. So I, I think if I could explain a little bit about what we have come to here, is as Norm explained, we are proposing a four-story building. We are building the, kind of an urban design, where we're pushing the construction of the building as close to all the property lines as we can, and three of the property lines, on Main and on Elgin and Detroit. Then we're going to have parking for the project, is going to take up the east side, back to the, back to the other street back there. The bottom floor of the project, the entire bottom floor of the project, is going to be dedicated to retail, restaurant, and office. We, Norm was, was expressing some numbers to you, he's, I think he said 31,000 feet. Those, the numbers that Norm was talking about on 31,000 feet, that's the actual rentable area. The actual size of the project is almost 150,000 square foot gross project. is almost a hundred and fifty thousand square foot gross project. So, it's a little bit bigger than that when you get to the, to the gross building area of the project. The next three floors that you see will be an upper-scale multifamily, urban-type multifamily project. We are going to fill the building up with it. Our RFP said we were gonna get up to ninety units. I think ninety units is the most, the highest number of units we can get into the building, provided that we, that we gain your approval today and move forward. Our designers will get to work, and the actual number of units will be dictated by what some of our market studies and that research tells us on what kind of unit mix we should do. We have more two bedrooms and three bedrooms. We'll have a fewer number of units, but in any case, you'll have the same, the same size project. You see the big common area. We've built the project in a U-shape, so that we are going to tie a heavily improved common area into here. We've got money allocated in the budget to, to provide an art feature, a public art feature of some kind. In the, in the rendering, you see it's depicted as a fountain. It could be something different than that, but it will, our design there will tie closely. We've been studying the drawings of everything you all have been doing on the Rose District, so our design will kind of carry your Rose District theme on, into the entry to our project. We do have, we do have, the architects are, are informally engaged at this point. Of course, we're not in a position to enter into a contract with them until we have a contract with you all, but those, those draft contracts are in place. Norm mentioned that our agreement does give us sixty days before we have to be under contract with the architects, but I will, I will tell you that that contract is drafted, and other than whatever few tweaks we have to make after we finish our agreement, that that contract will likely move forward much more quickly, quickly than that. As I introduce myself, I'm representing Milestone Capital. Milestone Capital will be the developer on the project. Cowan Construction, our construction company, will be the construction manager that ultimately builds the project. Milestone Capital is, is an LLC just for this project. We will be inviting additional development partners that bring in different, specific areas of expertise that have been working with us all along the way through the RFP process and through the negotiation of the contract. Those development partners are people that we're, we're familiar with and have current projects that are similar to this, of similar scale and much larger scales of projects like this that we have underway here in Oklahoma right now. Be happy to answer any questions.
I know you've been in discussion with the Methodist Church for parking. Are you going to utilize their parking, Catty Corner, for parking as well?
If, if, if needed, we have been in discussions with them. As, as you know, that this district does not require off-street parking, from a zoning perspective. From, if we, if we maximize the density that we could put in here, and a big part of the parking density is number of units, so if we go all the way up to ninety units, and then if we, we pick a multiplier for retail, restaurant, and business, those all have different parking requirements. But if we kind of maximize the maximum parking that a normal code would require us to have, the project would, would beg, the zoning, a normal zoning deal would beg to have two hundred and fifty parking places. We can park a hundred and fifty on our project site. So, from, from that practical perspective, we're, we would be technically assured if there was a requirement for zoning of a hundred spaces. So, to be prepared to react to that, we have been in discussions with the church. They've indicated their willingness to negotiate with us. They can't get into a formal negotiation with us until we offer them a specific agreement, and we gotta kind of chicken and egg, egg thing there. So, we're confident that we can do that. However, we're also pretty confident that the project would, would work nicely if, for some reason, we didn't do that, although we, I know we're going to do that to have that available.
Have you got far enough into your project that you're comfortable with what your rental rates are going to be, both for your retail and for your apartments? I'm not asking you to divulge that, but do you know basically what your rates are gonna be?
Well, well, yes, yes and no. Certainly, certainly, we looked at the market research that we have available to us, and we looked at other projects that we own and that we have under construction and under development, and looked at what those market studies say. We have not engaged our very specific market study on this particular site with this particular design until we have an agreement. So, we, we have determined, based on what we know surrounding rental rates to be, that's how we've based our proposal when we responded back in March.
Surrounding in the downtown area?
Yes. I mean, our, our project, I guess I answered it another way. If I look at a couple of projects, they're not really comparable, because they're very small infill projects that you do have around the Rose District. If I look at some of those rental rates that you're getting on those projects, we're forecasting lower rental rates than that, to be sure that we think the project is, is, is comfortable for us.
Any more questions?
Thank you, Mr. Cowan.
Thank you.
Let me just add one thing, Mayor, members of council. Let's go back to day one and Councilman Parks's comments, that the city's number-one goal was to remove that property that unfortunately had fallen into blightedness. And, and we did that. We did that very quickly. And secondly, council said that, obviously, that property, we need to make sure that we take a long look at the options we have available for the development of that property. And as a result of that, we went out and got a request for proposals at, with the approval of the council. And I think, I think you have before you a proposal this evening that I'd ask for your consideration for, that does many things that all of you have talked to me about, and a lot of residents, the EDC has talked about, is, is first and foremost is the need to, is to increase the, the number of residential units within, within our downtown. Now, with the amount of investments that have been made, public and private, and what's being made here, I believe that helps further that. Secondly, is that there is a need to help our businesses with additional daytime traffic. That's something that we've heard from many folks, especially from the Chamber of Commerce, is the need. Third, it's always about, as you heard Mr. Smithwick and Norm speak out, speak about this evening, is it's about jobs. So, there's gonna be opportunity for temporary jobs with the construction. There's gonna be opportunity for, for new jobs long-term. And most important to me is we're gonna provide our citizens more opportunities to shop local. And the one thing that you can't put a, a value on is that the Rose District, without question, has a vibe. It has, it has one of the hottest and one of the best vibes that you can find around anywhere in this state. And there's a lot of people that want to make investments in, in our downtown, not just on Main Street, but in a lot of other areas. And putting this type of residential down there, increasing, increasing the, the amount of residents, the amount of folks that'll be during the day, that's gonna, that's gonna just continue that vibe, that, that place where people want to be, to be close, to be close to where what's happening. And so, there are a lot of synergies with this project beyond the jobs, beyond the additional places to shop, and the daytime traffic, that I think are just gonna make this a place where people want to come to. And I'd ask for your consideration of this agreement.
Any more questions or comments?
I, I think this project accomplishes what we, as a council, promised we would do, which was remove a blighted structure and get our money back. And I think, at the end of the day, it does that. But I think it does a whole lot more in that we, we will, when it's finished, we should have a beautiful structure that will provide additional sales tax and additional development opportunities, and I think ties in the, the north end of the Rose District to the south end of the Rose District nicely. So, from my perspective, I think it, it accomplishes the, the essence of what it is we wanted to do with this project, and, and so, I would support it.
Do we have a motion?
Wes, I think Wes wants to make it.
Did you want to say something?
Yes.
If I may, I wanted to do one other thing, because I think it's important to do. This project doesn't stop at the borders of this project. And I've asked Wes Smithwick to come in and just speak for a moment, and I know this has been a long meeting, but just to the, the estimated economic impact for the area around.
Thank you, Norman. So, I hope you all realize what a big deal this is for Broken Arrow tonight. It's a huge deal. It's a, I'm gonna deviate from what I actually wrote down, but, but it's such a big deal that I can't say how big of a deal it is. Sound like President Trump, don't I? It's a big deal. But-
Huge.
Huge deal, the best deal. It's a big deal for a number of reasons, and City Manager spoke on a few of them, but it is the biggest capital investment we've had so far in the Rose District, by far. Second place doesn't even count compared to this. It's huge. And it is gonna do a, a number of things, and each of these are enough to justify this project, in my opinion, in their own right. It provides additional retail and restaurant space. In case you hadn't noticed, we're out. There's not anymore. Okay? People are calling our office all the time, wanting, so we get more of that. It provides residential living opportunities in the Rose District that will help us with density and capture nearby residents in the Rose District. We have had as a strategic objective in the Rose District this year to work on improving and increasing density of population. It's gonna allow the Rose District to grow organically to the north. We expect it will spur additional capital investment to the north. The City Manager talked about the new streetscape, so we're, we're gonna continue pushing to the north. This is gonna have more people spending more money to revitalize that area. The property tax alone, within a few years, will have paid back our investment in it, and will go to our TIF, TIF fund. And then, based on the retail mix that they go in there, and what they're selling, and the price points, it could be upwards of a couple hundred thousand dollars a year. Sales tax also flowing back to our TIF repay. So, it's a good thing, a really good thing. It will help us attract a younger generation living in the Rose District. It will be a type of living that they will like to have, to be here, and we need them to live here. We need them to frequent the, the retailers and restaurants and entertainment venues we have. So, it's a, it's a really good thing. But I would be remiss if I didn't thank Russell Gale, because it was Russell, the last time he was assistant, acting City Manager, before he was an assistant, who actually supported the idea that we try to make this happen. So, Russell, thank you. Thank you for your vision and your confidence in everybody to make it happen. I'd also like to thank Michael Spurgeon for quickly embracing this project. You know, when you get a new City Manager, you never know if they're gonna like what you're trying to do, but Michael was very enthusiastically behind this project very early on. I'd also like to thank Norm Stevens for his diligence in getting these, all these processes together to make this happen, and everybody else. And with that, I'll close and say, it is a really good thing for us here today, and I hope you will support this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Wes.
I'd make a motion to approve Resolution Number 1042 and authorize its, its execution.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Item 10, preview ordinances are earned. Item 11A, consideration discussion, possible adoption of ordinance number 3488. Beth Ann?
Yes, sir. Items A, B, and C were actually approved at the last meeting, but because you didn't have a supermajority of council members here, the emergency clause won't go into effect. And these ordinances, it's pretty important that we go ahead and move forward with their effective date, and rather than waiting for the thirty days to run, especially on the closure, we want to be responsive and accommodate our citizens. And so, I would respectfully request that you approve those three items separately.
So, it's a super council, is that what you're saying?
It is a super, super-duper council.
I caught that.
Make motion to adopt ordinance 3488, corrected.
Second. Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Move for emergency clause?
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Scott's excited that he's in a super council. We've got 11C.
Motion to adopt ordinance 3490, corrected.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Scott's excited that he's in a super council. We've got 11C.
Motion to adopt ordinance 3490, corrected.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Move for emergency clause?
Second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Item 11D, consideration discussion, possible adoption of ordinance number 3491. Beth Ann?
Yes, sir. This ordinance was previewed at the last meeting, and it provides for establishment of benches. I'm, I'm sure Mr. Jacques would be happy to review it all, but it, it's a terrific project. Otherwise, it's in substantially the same form as it was presented. We recommend that you adopt the ordinance.
Any questions, Beth Ann?
Move to adopt ordinance 3491.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Okay, item 12, remarks and inquiries by governing body members. I would just like to say that I'm really happy of the two things that we passed tonight that were major, the work that we've done with Alpha Laval for eighteen months, the state's done, to try to bring them here and bring more jobs, and we have more coming. It's really exciting what they've done there. And also, finally, getting this project going downtown, it's really gonna be a huge anchor for us, so I'm excited about both of those. We have any more comments or from the governing body? Everybody's ready for a meeting to get down, right? Mr. Spurgeon?
Thank you, Mayor.
Item 13.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I, I know that we do have a very important utility meeting, but I do have several things I want to mention to you. So, let me just start by first thanking you for your support on the resolution this evening regarding the illegal gaming. And I would be remiss if I did not publicly acknowledge Beth Ann Child's efforts to, to make sure we stay on top of this. It's just very important for all of us that, you know, we, we take a strong position, which I thank the council for. Beth Ann provided some great guidance and did a lot of due diligence. I want to publicly acknowledge her efforts. Secondly, I wanted to let the council know two things with regard to the proposed 2018 general bond obligation package. As I mentioned last month during the budget process, actually, it was June, I should say, is that staff is, has started the process of putting together some preliminary recommendations. I saw those preliminary recommendations last week, and I went through those and made sure I started to understand those. We're gonna run a parallel track. We are, as a staff, are gonna be putting together our projects and recommendations to you. At the same time, we are going to engage a public relations firm to help us with public education, and also to, to poll and take input from the community on what they perceive the priorities are for our community with respect to the quality of life projects. Tomorrow, I'm gonna be looking with Krista Flash, the request for proposals that we received from two very experienced companies that have, have submitted proposals for that. So, really, this is just to let you know that, that we are starting the preliminaries of putting together a package, and I would anticipate, sometime in, in probably November, be bringing that to you for your consideration. I also want to make sure that it's very important that I note that as a part of this due diligence that the administration is going to do, we will be meeting with members of the chamber to find out specifically what's important to them with potential economic development opportunities, because this will be that opportunity to look at the infrastructure. We've already had some preliminary discussions through Mr. Swab with the school district, and we will be formally meeting with them to look at where their planned schools are and see where that growth is anticipated, so we can make sure that those projects will be submitted to you. And also, Russell Peterson's here this evening. It's very important that when we have something that comes into focus, to go to, to build a better Broken Arrow and actually present to them, make sure we vet everything we need to do with them, because we're certainly gonna need their support when it comes to his expertise and others, and helping pass a bond package of the voters, and hopefully in August of next year. Secondly, tonight, before the council meeting, we had a, a special work session on the manual of fees. I want to thank the council for your, for your time and all the staff members for putting together their recommendations. We will come forward with the resolution at one of the next two meetings. Couple other items I wanted to mention is that on August 22nd, we are going to be having a meeting in South Broken Arrow regarding the city's development efforts in South Broken Arrow. We've been working on the agenda and the presentations that we're going to be giving. I'll mention this at the next meeting as well. We will be putting out information to our, our citizens about, inviting them to the, to the meeting, to tell them exactly what investments we've made, what economic development recruitment efforts are ongoing. And we've even invited the developer of Aspen Creeks to come to talk about his specific efforts, to make sure that the citizens, who obviously have some concerns down there, explain to them where we're at and what our hopes are, because I think we all have the same vision as they do, is bringing additional retail, commercial. We're gonna get the, the residential we're gonna get. It's a retail and commercial that they're very, very interested in finding out what we're doing. But I think you have to prime the pump, and I think it's important to know what type of investments the city has made. So, I'm looking forward to that meeting. We are getting additional communications equipment this, later this week, so there is a possibility, a slight possibility, that we should be able to record the meeting and then be able to televise it on, on Cox Channel 24, as well as our website. then be able to televise it on Cox Channel 24, as well as our website. Not going to commit to that right now, because we've got to do the training, but I'm hopeful that we'll be able to take the meeting on the 22nd, because I've already received a couple requests from residents that can't make it but would like to see the outcomes. If we can't, we will do a highlight segment to let them know, and certainly answer any questions that come in. And then finally, because we had two council members that were out of the state last month and couldn't be here, I want to mention something I think is very important for our community, because it's a substantive change in the way we do business every day. And this is mainly for the mayor and for Councilman Parks, for all the council members. At the last meeting, the council approved an agreement to allow the city to buy either through a direct acquisition or lease three new ambulances. And those ambulances, we should have them in about 150 days, so by approximately the end of the year, we'll have three additional ambulances. What Chief Moore told us last meeting was, in order for us to keep six ambulances rolling, we need 12 ambulances. And so, because obviously, you know, they break down. So I wanted to thank the council members for their support in getting the ambulances. With that, we also announced that July 19th, we actually staffed a seventh ambulance for the first time in the city's history. So now we have seven stations, we have seven ambulances that are actually running to provide the support to our citizens, because I think approximately 75 to 80% of our calls are emergency medical related. And we were able to do that because we now have the personnel through Division 2025 repurposing to be able to staff those ambulances. What I think's important is we just take a second here and just remember that the conversations regarding the ambulance started back in January, and that on March 7th, Jeremy, the fire chief, gave a presentation to the council where he said he wanted to add a seventh ambulance, and the council basically said, put a plan together with the administration, and then make sure that we can pay for it, and let's make it happen, and which on July 19th, we actually did that. So I just want to let the council members that weren't here know that we have added a seventh ambulance. It's something we've been talking about for nearly eight months now, and I'm just very proud that we're able to offer that service to our citizens, because it is definitely needed. So thank you.
Thank you. We do have executive sessions, so I entertain a motion to go into brief recess to go into Bama and Beta.
So move.
Second. Motion second, roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
I'll call the Broken Arrow Municipal Authority to order. Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Udi?
Here.
Thurman?
Here.
We have a consent agenda, we have item three. Is there any items to be removed?
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Item five, public hearings, appeals, presentations. We have presentation, discussion, possible acceptance of the Broken Arrow Citizen Recycle Committee report. We have, okay, Lee's going to do it. Lee Zerk.
Good evening, Lee Zerk, General Services Director. In the spring of 2016, the City Council authorized a survey to understand the opinions of refuse customers to serve as a guide in the development and decision-making process of the future refuse and recycling services. And in August 2016, the survey was presented to the Broken Arrow Municipal Authority. As a result of that survey, the city manager recommended that a committee be put together to study refuse and recycling in Broken Arrow. As a result of that survey tonight, I'd like to introduce Mr. Peterson and the chairman of the committee, and Kate Vasquez, the senior consultant for GBB, which was assisting the committee, and talk to you about the committee's actions and their potential recommendations.
Mr. Peterson?
Russell Peterson, I'm chairman of the Recycling Committee for the City of Broken Arrow. Before I make my presentation, I just want to say one thing. I am so excited about some of your agenda items showing these economic development opportunities, and I want to commend the city and the chamber and the EDC for all the level of cooperation that obviously was necessary to get that done. I've been looking for that for 35 years, and I think we are there, and I really appreciate you guys for all the effort you have been doing on that. The Recycling Committee started about nine months ago, and I'm not going to take a lot of time on this, but essentially, I'm going to ask the committee members that are present to stand. We met approximately two times a month with this nine-month period, and we essentially started out with tours of the existing facilities in our area. We went to the Met, the Covanna Energy Plant, and the Murph, and then off of that, started an educational process to get us up to speed. We determined what are recyclable types of items and what was not recyclable, and then we also talked about the economic impact of those recyclables. A lot of us hadn't understood that if we have tons of recycling, go through a plant that is a commodity that is valuable, that offsets some of the cost of doing the recycling. Early on, we reached a consensus that the city should consider a curbside recycling program, and we're asking for your consideration on that in our report. The report will be, the nuts and bolts of it, Kate will do here in just a little bit. After we reached that consensus, we looked at what kind of program that we might, you know, have in the future. And we looked at bags, we looked at carts, we looked at combinations of those things. And after careful consideration, we have a recommendation for you at this time. We would ask that Bama set up a four-month pilot project that would involve a designated area in our town that the city would determine. The program would involve placing one cart for recyclables, one cart for garbage or refuse, and this would involve essentially a one-week pickup and elimination of the free bag program. The economics of that basically are neutral, as will be explained in our report. After the pilot has been done, we would urge that a scientific survey be done with the citizens that were affected in the area, determine their input into that procedure, staff in this committee, look at that, and then make a final recommendation to this Some of the things that are going to be in our report involve change, some maybe semi-radical changes, and as we know, a lot of change in any situation sometimes can be opposed by some people. However, we do believe that is progress, is another word for change, and we would ask you to carefully look at this and take it into consideration. I'm going to close, there's a quote in the recent Wonder Woman movie that says, if you see something wrong in your world or community, you can do something or nothing, and we've already tried nothing. So we ask you to try something along this area, and at this time, I'll turn over to
Hello, good evening. It's so great to be back with you guys again here in beautiful Broken Arrow. I'm happy to share the report of the Recycling Committee. Our firm, GBB, has been staffing this committee since it's been meeting over the past several months, as Mr. Peterson described. I've just prepared a couple of slides that highlight the work of the committee and its There's me, but we've met before. The committee, I wanted to recap again, as Mr. Peterson did, the amount of work that they did. This was a dedicated, dedicated, hard-working committee. There were no preconceived conclusions. They gave a lot of their time, and we work with a lot of committees, and this is one of the most effective dedicated groups, I say without reservation, that I see doing this kind of work. I just wanted to share, this is the presentations and field trips that they went on, to make sure that they understood all of the subject matter information that they were considering in the course of their work. One of the tasks on this project that was information for the committee was a cost model conducted by Gersham Brinkner Bratton, the firm I work for. This was, we were asked to provide cost modeling on one possibility and a variation thereupon. In this instance, we cost modeled a typical two-cart system, which many people are familiar with, where you have a cart for garbage and a cart for recycling. It's picked up once a week, both on the same day, and then a variation on that whereby the garbage would still be allowed to be set out in bags on the ground, which would require the purchase of fewer carts, which is a capital cost. So you can see in the reddish rusty color, this is based on FY16 actual. Please note that this is not a rate model, this is a cost model. Rates are often influenced by other various factors that weren't captured in this cost model. These costs in this model, we are very confident in everything that we inputted, and anything that could not be sourced with that level of certainty was left out of the model. So, and I will talk about that in just a moment. But so, just for comparison, FY16 actual, this is, the 1359 you see is what came out of the model. And that program is funded on break even, so clearly, you can see how it didn't have every single cost in it. Scenario one with the two carts, and scenario two with the one cart and the bags on the ground, you'll see three different outputs, high, low, and typical. That has to do with the price of processing the recyclables at the material recovery facility. At present, City of Tulsa enjoys a very well-negotiated rate for processing their recyclables and a revenue-sharing agreement, which GBB finds to be typical and very good in the interest of the city. That is what you see for the low, as in the low price for the processing. The price you see for high is for high-price processing. And for this version, we used the price that was previously quoted a few years ago by the material recovery facility to City of Broken Arrow for a pilot project. This would be considered a ceiling price. It has to be expensive due to the nature of a pilot project, a temporary effort. The third number you see there, typical, is a rate that GBB would, if we were procuring on your behalf, we would hope to negotiate that or better with the materials recovery facility, based on what we know they charge Tulsa and what we know similar facilities charge other cities across the US. So the number you see there next to typical is what would be associated with a processing cost of about $60 a ton, compared to Tulsa currently enjoys 40. Are there any questions about the cost model? I'll just pause for a moment. Okay. I want to be sure to caution that these results aren't interpreted as recycling could quote-unquote "save money," because there are costs we know that the city is going to have in the near future that we could not put into this cost model. Most specifically and significantly is any new GPS-based equipment for the trucks would affect the operating cost per mile of those vehicles. For this cost model, we use lifetime-to-date for your trucks. City keeps excellent, excellent records, and it worked into the model very well, but we would expect that number to change, because there's going to be new equipment, there's support of the equipment, et cetera. So I've talked about those first two things here, the caveats on the cost model already. The third one is recycling performance between scenario one and scenario two. As a reminder, scenario one is the two-cart system, and scenario two is the one-cart In the absence of any real field information to compare it to, the conservative position was to assume that the two programs would perform similarly, i.e., people would divert the same amounts of material in both kinds of programs, and the quality of the material would be the same. However, I don't have any programs I can compare to estimate what the diversion might be different between the two. We were able to only identify one city that currently has that method, and at the risk of disparaging the folks that live in that town, it was not a benchmark-level program. Their recycling rate, they report to their state, is 12%, which is not a benchmark or gold standard performance. Key influences on the costs, why did they work out the way that they did? And it can really come to four things. The most important is reducing the collection frequency to one day per week. With the use of carts, for sanitation purposes, once a week is safe and clean, and the capacity is adequate to store the material, strictly from a sanitation and operational perspective. That also allows you to use your current fleet without needing to purchase many additional trucks, perhaps none at all. The introduction of computerized routing also would let you use your current fleet to do a once-a-week collection of the two different streams, two passes on the same day, and it makes the routes more efficient, it makes them more balanced, and it lets the trucks and the drivers be utilized in the most efficient manner. Third, as Mr. Peterson mentioned, is the removal of the bag expense. The bags currently, I think the budget line item for this year is $518,000. That number increases every year. It's expected to continue to increase. It's not only directly tied to how many households there are, but it is an item that just goes up every year. And then the third thing is recyclables revenue sharing. At present, revenue sharing is strong in the US. You have very good access to markets here in this part of Oklahoma. I would expect you to be able to negotiate a revenue-sharing agreement similar to what City of Tulsa, but also other cities of clients of GBBs that we have recently seen, that we have recently helped clients procure, with that sort of revenue sharing, making your net cost per ton similar in cost to you as disposal, ideally even better, but at least similar, so that you don't pay more for recycling per ton than you would to go to the burn plant in Tulsa. We've talked about the recommendations a little bit. I just went ahead and put these in here, talking about the free bags and their distribution. There are some matters about the bags, other than just the cost that they, what they cost to buy. It's possible that not having a cart at the curb will reduce the benefit of a GPS-based tracking system, not knowing exactly what system the city is going to purchase, but many of these systems rely on being able to read a chip or take an address point, and there is no such thing on a bag. Also, the opaque bags and the general set-out allowance may have not be encouraging participation in recycling. Once-weekly collection, recognizing that that is the tradition in Broken Arrow to have twice-weekly, it is, with the advent of single-stream recycling and the use of rolling carts, the database that GBB currently maintains of cities and counties with 100,000 or more residents, fewer than 10% of those communities have twice-weekly collection. Most places where we have seen twice-weekly collection, it's a private effort by the part of the residents, for example, in an HOA that has private sector collection. Also, best practice shows that refuse and recycling should be collected on the same day to encourage better participation. Mr. Peterson talked about the use of the carts for the recyclables. This is the best practice currently in the US to provide enough capacity so that residents don't run out of space or don't feel like they have, by separating their material into two streams, they have a bunch of stuff all over their house, to use colloquial language. The carts encourage people to store it up till it suits their needs. Some families will put it out every week, some families will put it out every other week. Also, if you miss your collection day, you have storage capacity. And then the fourth recommendation about the pilot project, there would be two pilot areas, one- areas, one for each suggested methodology. In both, the collection would be on the same day, once a week, and in both, there would be no additional distribution of, it would be testing the use of the bags, but obviously these residents would still have bags saved up. So it's an approximation of what the new system would be like, but it would still permit in scenario two for bags to be on the ground. GBB was asked to prepare some cost information about what a pilot project might cost to run. There are two columns here, one for scenario one, which is the two cart, the two cart scenario, and one is for scenario two, I'm sorry that these are a little small to read, for one and two. The second column is for one and two, scenario one and two. And I need to point out that some additional information became available since your report was printed. It's, it's a minor point, but it bears noting, since this is in the, in the report as it was printed. The retrofit of the collection trucks had been estimated at approximately $5,000 per truck. It is in actuality $10,000 per truck. This is some new quote information that came in from the vendor. So I just wanted to point out that your report shows $15,000 for the one study and $35,000 for the two, two studies on the line there where it's highlighted, and it, those are the actual estimated values, 30 and 75, 30 and 70, excuse me. So twice as much on the truck conversion cost. There are a few costs that aren't on this estimate also. There would be some internal city expenses, perhaps fuel is more, perhaps there's costs associated with using the onboard computer equipment on the trucks, which is effort that's, that is underway, we understand, is going to happen independent of this. And again, not knowing what those were, the conservative position was to leave them out and note, note that. I'm happy to take any other questions.
Any questions for Kate?
You, I think you noted in the report that glass would not be a part of the recyclables. Is that correct?
We would suggest that if, since you're starting from scratch, that you not take glass in the single-stream program. Glass has many operational problems at the material recovery facility, which largely serves to wear out the equipment prematurely, reduce the value of the other recyclables, and much glass that goes into a material recovery facility is not recycled into new products. It is used for beneficial reuse, for example, cover for landfill, in the place of gravel, for different uses, et cetera. But it is not manufactured into new bottles or new things like that. When you can collect glass separately, your entire recycling program is actually improved overall. The glass that people do bring to that program does get recycled, and there's research about several cities there in the, in the report about that. In addition, the overall quality of your other materials should be better, which, if I were helping you with the contract, I would mention that to the material recovery facility, that you were not going to have people, you were not going to have glass as a program material. You have an excellent opportunity with the Met in town, with an established, well-known and used recycling drop-off center, where they might collect the glass in it as its own stream and actually get some value for it, whereas at present, glass is quote-unquote "a loser." It does not pay. The material recovery facility has to pay to get rid of it, and you would not be paid anything for it, but you would pay to have it processed. So every ton of glass you send in, you'd be paying to have it processed, but you would not be getting any revenue for it.
Well, and Mike, I had the opportunity to go to the MRF when we went there, and I believe that the statement was there that they didn't want glass, the MRF did not want glass.
Yeah.
Well, and, and I can tell you with my work on the, on the Met, that they, glass just is not an income producer for, for that.
Mixed in the single-stream?
Exactly. So being able to divide it can, can be a, can yield some profit, but, but in a, in the mixed stream, it doesn't.
Correct.
I had a couple of questions that some people had asked me. Some garages don't have room to hold two cans, or do we have to, will we have to set some kind of ordinance of where your trash cans could be held, like when they're not on the street?
Most localities do have something like that. Sometimes there's screening laws that require it not to be visible from the front or from the side. Sometimes they have to do with what hours the cans can be at the curb, and then beyond that, as long as it's put away, then it's, it doesn't have to necessarily be inside a structure, for example, a garage. There are many different ways to write that. That is a concern, namely because you don't want people leaving it at the curb all the time. Invites dumping, they blow over, they get knocked over, et cetera. There are any number of ways that, that can be addressed.
And then we'll have to make sure, I mean, the, the education of it all, and just letting everyone know that part of it. And then if we go down to one day, obviously, I mean, like I can fill up in my two days, you know, a pickup, I've got trash out there, several bags. Do they pick up the trash, the extra bags as well, that are, because I'll have twice as much on one day? And then will that eliminate employee jobs, since we're only one day a week instead of two days a week?
The staffing question, we did not have any change in the level of trucks, which would indicate that you would still have the same number of drivers. It's not less or more, it's differently allocated. And then your other question about capacity. In other cities, often to help people accommodate the capacity, to make sure they have enough, they will allow residents to have more than one cart for an additional surcharge, whether they want it to be a recycling cart or a trash cart. I'm not speaking from anything that we've talked about on the committee or that I've talked about with staff, this is just as an example. It's usually a few dollars, and it's to make sure that there's enough, that everything is contained. As far as extra bags, that would be something else that you would have to discuss in the process of implementation. Some cities allow extra bags, some don't. If you decided not to, that would be in a situation where the vehicles that are used can't operate in that way. If you're going to continue to use manual loading, you may want to consider allowing a certain number of bags or pursuing the additional cart route.
I do know that from my, my perspective, and Scott and I were on that committee, when we started recycling several years ago, my wife and I, we only, we probably decreased the amount of trash by 60, 65% that we actually have them pick up now, because we recycle, we take it to the Met every week, every week and a half, take it. So it's decreased, maybe to go along with the answer to your question, if you do recycle. And, and I think that the committee, and I'm hoping not speaking out of term, but if I've got this right, and, and where we took it from the beginning, recycling will be volunteer. I mean, you, if you don't want to do it, you can actually opt out of recycling. That came down from the council from the very beginning. But if, because, so you're going to have more trash if you do that. But those that recycle are going to have a lot less trash to pick up, and the trash that we picked up, both of them we picked up on the same day, which I was kind of surprised, but as they shared, is that people start mixing their trash more if they don't do that. So if you do recycle, you're going to have a lot more trash. If you don't recycle, then you're going to have more trash on one day, right?
And I agree with Johnny. I started recycling about 10 years ago and pay for a curbside service that we have here in Broken Arrow, and I've, I've found that about 60%, about the same, I have 60% less trash going out. There's a lot of days I, on Thursday, I don't put out a bag, or I usually just have one or two bags now, we're used to. I just had a lot of bags out every day, so it does make a difference. And I think that some people probably find that they'll maybe want an extra recycling cart if they're filling them up, but it does really make a big difference. I think having two 96-gallon carts is quite a bit, but there, there are some days when you, you know, if you clean your house or something, you may have an extra cart, so we'll have to look at how we address that, but.
It's, it's going to be a, whatever, it's, it's going to be a change. And we have such a, a good trash system now, they do such a good job with it. But if you look through the information from the committee, you'll see the Wartman's Comp problem with picking up, being a council, I know you guys study and look into different things, look in how many cities across the state that do have individual pickup of bags, and it just doesn't happen. I was in Noawatta a few months ago with my students doing some volunteer work, and they had two trash trucks, and both of them were automatic, and, and they were the 112th or 113th largest city in the state. So they're a very small city, but yet they still have the automation on that. So it is going to be a transition, which is really nice, just to take a bag out, and it's out of mine, out of sight. You're spending a half a million dollars a year just on trash bags that's going to be in a dump, that's not going to, it, 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 it just doesn't deteriorate. So I think it's going to give those that want to recycle an opportunity, and the carts are used, you know, on vacation. I've looked at cities, and you'll see them. Most ordinances I've seen and looked at, they didn't let them leave the cart out, and you know what I mean, that evening the carts had to be put back up. And, and one deal that I looked at individually was that of the top 10 cities in the state, we're the only ones that don't have automatic, automation in our trash pickup system. So Broken Arrow might have a system that they like, because it's just out of sight, but it's behind the times, Wartman's Comp-wise, ecology-wise, and so I think it's something that we look at. The recommendation from the committee, which a lot of the members, most of the members are, are here, as we saw a while ago, is that, that we have two pilot programs, one with the cart and, and a bag, we don't furnish the bag, the other one with the two carts, and then get feedback from those two systems. So I will say that Michelle Burgwell with the school system made a suggestion, and I think we're going to give this to staff, I'm hoping to, to, to look at it and get back with us, is that they pick a couple of schools for that to help centralize it, the different areas that they're going to run the pilot programs, and that way, the one thing to look at is getting information out, and the kids in those school districts really get involved with that and encourage parents. So the city manager can get with, Michelle would help circle that, but I'm, I'm looking forward to getting that information. I have no problem with going to the one-day pickup. I don't see much, look at your, look at your subdivisions, how many's picked up that second day.
I think our biggest challenge that we have with change is the fact that we've done such a great job for so many years. And so it's hard to change, it's, it's, yeah, so, but I, I do think it's, I am excited about seeing the pilot programs implemented and an opportunity to see what the surveys come back, and, and I think that a lot of people will appreciate the change once this happens.
Take note of your subdivision, just to, final comment, take note of your subdivision on, on the pickup days, and see how many people already use carts. It's in excess of 50% in my subdivision. They use the cart, put the stuff in a bag, take a cart out, just to protect the trash when they're out, so they're already using carts.
Well, the, I, I was the city council alternate on the committee, so I didn't get to vote, but I sure got to give my two cents worth. But I think the, the key issue, and I know the mayor and councilman Parks alluded to this, is we're, we're looking at pilot programs so that we can determine what is the best practice and what, what would be best here. It also gives us an opportunity to collect that data, as I understand, to determine, is a change appropriate? If it is, as opposed to this wholesale, you know, forcing everyone to do something, that's certainly not our heart. Our, we want to see what works, and I think that, that's the recommendation, is, is let's try it in, in localized areas and see what works, and then we can come back and, and take the data and figure out where we go next.
Well, and what's really important is this is a community and a citizens committee that brought this recommendation, and I think that's paramount. What we do here is let the citizens come together and make these recommendations, so I think it's, I'm, I'm looking forward to it.
Mayor, I have to, just one, one question. Kate, with, with regard to the, the pilot program with the two carts and the one day per week, did the committee talk about offering different-sized carts for, for trash for, for folks, or is that something that was going to be discussed, a way, way if council accepts the recommendation?
Different rates.
The different carts, like a different, the size carts, like you can get the 90-gallons, there's also smaller ones, so is a part of the pilot, offering one or two sizes to, or three sizes to folks?
The committee set aside discussing different-sized carts because the survey last year indicated that there was not a strong interest in pay-as-you-throw, a different rate for different-sized carts. For this project, we have talked throughout with about 64-gallon carts, but then 96-gallons were just mentioned. The biggest difference between using one or the other would be some cost, the larger ones cost a little more, but you're going to amortize it. And of course, they're larger to store, they do have a larger footprint. Any cart smaller than that presents some challenges. We have seen a lot recently in other cities where people sized down to a 32-gallon cart, which for, for reference, that is about the size of the recycling bin you might be familiar with from other cities, that's 32 gallons. And then having a very large recycling cart, which are generally offered at a lower price, and then just contaminating it. We've seen communities with 25% to 35% contamination when they have implemented a program like that. It's not to say that it can't work, but we're starting to think that a 32-gallon, which would be the next size down, has, for garbage, has some challenges that should maybe be considered very carefully. I would suggest that in implementing this program, you would do 64 or 96-gallon carts, the same for each type. And then if you want to look at allowing people to choose one or the other, that is, there's an administration, administrative level, and there are costs associated with that. Servicing them should be no, no real difference, it would be the capital cost. But the committee specifically did not discuss that.
Okay.
Well, I, I really want to take a second to thank everyone that was involved. You, the, the committee, to just have 13 meetings and take time out of your, your day and, and spend the time and, and the energy that it took to, to discuss this issue and to learn about it, and the education that, that you got, and then taking that information and passing it on to report to us, we, we really appreciate that. I appreciate Johnny and Scott going to 13 more meetings and, and definitely appreciate your time, and Kate, appreciate GBB putting this together for us. I don't know if we have any more discussion. I know that, that, you know, they requested us to accept this report and have staff give some more work to staff.
Actually, I will say, Mayor, members of the, actually, authority members, should council choose to accept it, I mean, obviously, the members of the committee and the committee's going to know what the next steps are. And so the, the next steps after acceptance would be for the administration to, to sit down and to look at the two options that have been presented for pilots specifically and determine, like you, like Kate said tonight, that a lot of the costs are outlined, but we need to get those, those costs, all of those costs listed, so they'll know what we're talking about, and then actually schedule a time with the authority to come back and make a recommendation to you based on the, the report from the committee, and then based on the action that you take with regard to the administration's recommendation, and then we would implement one or both of the pilot programs that the council choose. And then we would be prepared to talk about the, the implementation plan in terms of the public education to, to our customers, the school districts, and then we would have a series of, of public meetings in the areas that would be designated for the pilot program. Probably, I would say, at least two, if not three, meetings. That may not be necessary, but we would certainly do whatever we need to do to, to invite all those folks who are going to be asked to participate, so they know exactly what's going to be asked of them as a part of a pilot program, and then we'd pick it, we would pick a start date, and then we would go forward from there.
Any more questions, discussion, authority?
So we need to accept the report?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion, we accept the report.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. And I thank everybody involved for all the time they put into this.
And I believe that they will get that after we're finished with those pilot programs, and this committee will meet back and also view that.
Go over the survey and...
Appreciate it. And, and great time as far as, there wasn't very many times that we didn't have nearly 100%, maybe 80% participation.
That's great.
So they were there on, on time.
Mr. Parks, whatever council decides, we will continue to invite them to those public meetings and the, and the pilot programs. I mean, they, they did a lot of work, and so therefore, I, I believe their roles should continue, should they choose, to, to be a part of that.
Thank you.
Well, and I would also say Kate has done a great job of helping steer us, and a lot of good work, so thank you.
Thank you very much. We look forward to working with you some more.
Thank you.
Thank you, Russell. We have no general authority business, no executive session. Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion second. Roll call.
She already said, hold it. She already said.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
I'll take care of it, yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Apparently, I need to check my ears.
I'll call the Broken Economic Development Authority meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Udi?
Here.
Thurman?
Here. Item three is consent agenda, are there any items to be removed?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Item five, general authority business, five A, consideration discussion, possible approval of resolution number 1021, a resolution of Broken Arrow Economic Authority accepting general warranty deed from City of Broken Arrow conveying all rights. Norman?
This is actually the authority accepting the deed.
Okay.
I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I make a motion to approve resolution number 1021 and authorize its execution.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Item five B, consideration discussion, possible approval of resolution number 1040. I assume this is probably Beth Ann, or is this Norm? I've got, I've got Norm down here on the list, so.
I was told by one of my fellow staff members that I spoke for 36 minutes the last time, so I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Seem like an air.
Just asleep in the back.
Any questions of Norm?
Move to approve resolution 1040 and everything it says.
Second.
Motion second, discussion?
No.
Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Item 10C, consideration discussion, possible approval of resolution number 1041.
I'll be hap, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
This is the place.
Okay. Any questions of Norm?
Make a motion, we approve resolution number 1041.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. There's no executive session, need one more motion.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. So it's our just meeting tonight. I'd entertain, we're back in regular session, I entertain a motion for a brief recess so we can go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?